You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's November 16th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
It is three o'clock. I will welcome everybody to our regular board meeting for the Michigan City Housing Authority. It is November 16th, 2023. Can we all stand for the pledge? Mr. Rags.
Will we leave it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Forgive me. Mr. Lane on the roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. McCormick?
Present.
Mr. Vincent? Ms. Perry? Rainey?
Yeah.
Rainey, yeah, I'll give it. I'm sorry.
That's us.
Uh, Mr. Honig?
Honig.
Present.
Sorry about that. Honig?
Moody here.
Present. And Benny?
Present.
And Michael Vincent is now present.
There he is. Sorry, everyone.
Got the leaves on?
We're half done for the season.
I think you just need to say present.
Present.
The approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion of the minutes?
Mr. Chair. If I could, uh, let you know, uh, these, there's two sets of minutes in your packets, October the 10th, which was a special meeting, and then October the 28th, which was a regular.
Would you like to amend that to?
I'll amend my motion to make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
On the roll call, please.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm bad on your name. Raina? Uh, Mr. Honig?
Moody here.
Lowen, Mo, Moody here. Honig, Benny, and Mr. McCormick?
Aye.
I actually didn't vote because I'm still waiting for those minutes. I see September, I don't see anything from October in here.
October 10th is the second one in, as I flip through.
Oh, here we go. Who was having it? Yeah, I got September and October.
Could be November.
Well, that's the agenda.
Agenda, sorry.
I'm still listening.
November, under, under, under.
Yeah.
Can I see it?
Well, I bet September and October 10th. Was there another October? I thought you said?
No.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Honig, do you want to vote, uh, up or down? Thank you. I'd like to do some housekeeping here at this, at this time. I like them, I would entertain a motion, or I would like the motion to add to the agenda, um, all housing that is non-public housing to the agenda.
I make a motion to, um, add all housing that is not currently public housing to our agenda today.
That's, that includes business activity or any other housing that has nothing to do with public housing.
So move.
Sir. On the roll call, please.
I'm not used to doing this, uh, I'm used to doing this different. Uh, I'm used to doing the show of hands. Do you, you just need the roll call, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. McCormick?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Renee?
Rena.
Rena?
Aye.
Honig?
Honig?
Aye. Mr. Uh, Ms. Benson?
Benny?
Benny? And, uh, Mon, hey, I'm, I'm sorry about names, folks, I'm not.
That's okay.
So, that's why I do it differently. Sorry about that.
Next on the agenda? Communication?
Okay, um, communication, I, I will, uh, refer that down, uh, in the new business and the executive director report. Uh, don't know of any, anything else, uh, that is going on, and I don't, I see we don't have anybody here from the public, so, uh, I would assume nobody is, is going to speak today on that. And what we've done, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, we do have sheet for people to sign in, then we give that to the chairperson, uh, to call those folks off, uh, by first name, so that they can have their time to speak, but, uh, nobody called in or came in for that.
Any discussion from anyone? Mr. Lane, uh, what we at, at reports?
Okay, um, what we, what I'd like to do, and I hope you, uh, if you're okay with this, we have, uh, reports here from, uh, our folks here of different divisions of this agency, um, the public housing, you received, uh, information on that, and it is in your packet. Uh, this is a thumbnail sketch of the things that are going on, uh, here at the housing. I would like to point out some things that I'm very happy with, that, uh, in the last few weeks, we've had five new residents to, um, be residing on our properties, uh, we're very happy about that. So, uh, there's bit, uh, information in there, if you have additional, uh, comments or questions, we have our staff in the room, and they have prepared these reports, and we'll be doing that, so that they can give you kind of a thumbnail sketch, or an overall executive summary of what is going on in their specific area. Uh, going to the Housing Choice Vouchers, um, uh, there's information here for you on, on that, uh, and that particular program. Also, I'd like you to know that, uh, the Housing Choice Voucher Program does have an impact in this community. Uh, we presented landlords this last month, 151,964 dollars, uh, that went to private landlords and, and, uh, through our program. So, uh, we're, uh, that, that kind of helps not only our residents, but, uh, also landlords in the area. Uh, on the finance report, I, I have information for you, I have the, uh, audit from last year, I do not have a, uh, a sheet, uh, telling every, all the action that happened, uh, this time. We've been without our financial manager for over two weeks, uh, due to health reasons, uh, and was not able to, uh, generate that, as this is the person that, uh, does that. Also, I have, um, copies for you, and if you'd like to receive one, well, I put in the packets of what our accounts are, all of the accounts, uh, this is as of, uh, I believe the one you're seeing is as of 7:43 this morning, uh, of all of our accounts, and you can see what's going on with, uh, bank accounts and, and see that sort of thing. Um, so I wanted you to have that, and, um, um, see if there's any, any questions that you have under the finance or, or that sort of thing?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Under public housing, the public housing report, uh, it stated that we had 200 plus on the waiting list.
Right.
Um, that have been basically purged, is that correct? That you, it says that they have been pulled from the waiting list.
If they have been pulled, they have been purged.
Okay.
Is that right?
No, pulled is what, the.
Oh, pulled to the, oh, sorry.
Actually, uh, each 14 hundred applicants, process their applications to see if they income qualified to our purging.
So, do we have a number that's on the waiting list?
Uh, we, we have different, we have different wait lists, so there are different numbers for a different wait list, uh, I do not have those with me, however, I can get those emailed to you by tomorrow morning. Uh, we have public housing, we have home ownership, we have business activity, and we also have, uh, NCHDI wait lists. So each waiting list has people on those waiting lists, there are different numbers, and I can.
We could hope, forgive me, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Um, you said, uh, people waiting on first time home buyers, I can wait for that list, I'd like to have a list now.
Okay.
Um, and if you, any of your other staff, Mr. Lane, want to give a report or add to their, what you already said, we'd be more than happy to hear from them.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to, to add on?
This is my, um, we did, we have six vouchers, six new vouchers, we're trying to put them on the wait list as quick as we can, and as best we can, but we still have to make sure they qualify, and somebody be sure things are there, but we are working on wait list to get them out there. And we do, we are doing the five mile predictions, so they can go five miles, it's almost about another thousand, authority minutes, not, those are going to give the report.
I have a question, Mr. Lane, uh, maybe, um, Ms. Cooper, you might be able to answer it. We said that we were going to, um, amend our admin, um, so that we can go, we can start looking LaPorte area, city of LaPorte, have we?
Uh, no, what we can do, here's what we could legally do, is we have this approved by, uh, we can go five miles from our borders, as long as it doesn't interfere with any other housing authority's jurisdiction. That's the rule. We don't have any other housing authority jurisdiction within five miles. Um, that's something I would have to look up, I don't have that off the top of my head. Yeah, I don't think so. But we would not, uh, we, we can't get in their, uh, area that they could house people, we have to do it in our area, but we can expand that out that five miles, as long as we don't get in their particular area.
But we can take people outside of the five miles to come in, correct?
No, it's, it's five miles and in.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 that's a different way of saying it.
Yes. Any other questions for any board member, Ms. Cooper, or any other staff member would like to speak at this turn?
I know that I don't have a work order report in your guys' packet, um, since Mr. Chef has been out sick, I have been handling the front on my own, doing the best that I can, um, so therefore I have, I still create the work orders, I just haven't been able to post them out. I've instead been putting her invoices, as well as your guys' payments for your meetings and things of that nature, and just doing the best that I can to keep her on track, um, keep us pushing forward and keeping vendors paid, because we don't want vendors to not be paid, so I've been working on that.
Any questions? I guess we reached a point, Mr. Rags, uh, maybe we have a, a report from their attorney?
Yes, um, I saw on the public housing report, uh, that there is a eviction line item, that I believe I've never seen that before, uh, but it is correct, there are, there have been zero, ten has taken the court, uh, between last meeting and this meeting, there is one scheduled to go, uh, upcoming, now there is, uh, one who we are awaiting, uh, possession of the unit, she was able to get four different extensions through the court, uh, before she had the possession of the unit, uh, the last extension was slated to be the final extension, uh, was, um, set for November 15th, so we have to wait out until, until today, the next day, see if she's still in the unit, and then she'll call, uh, the sheriff, uh, who says we're forced to move, uh, and that's just what is called in the law, it's not actual force, it's just called force. Um, as the authority knows, there is one on one federal case, uh, that we are currently litigating on behalf of MCHA, uh, it is in the pleading stage, um, and pleading law ongoing, uh, there is no timeline for resolution on the pleading stage, because it is a federal case, and they do not have timelines, goes into the federal, it's like a state statute. Uh, with that said, if anyone has any questions, I'll undertake.
I, I, I should have been added to the agenda was the, uh, the open door violation that was reported against us.
There was a, um, there was a violation alleged of the Indiana Open Door Law that was sent down to the Indiana Public Access Counselor, uh, by a gentleman whose name, uh, escapes me, uh, starts with the, started with the, I contacted the office of the Indiana Public.
Darryl Borden.
That.
Darryl Borden.
Uh, I contacted the Indiana, uh, Public Access Counselor's office to state that our firm, we represent, and we were in contact with them all the time for the agency that we represent, and he did send me a copy of a complaint that was made, along with his response, his response was that was not a, uh, an open door law violation issue, if there were questions that the gentleman had, the Public Access Counselor's office would speak with him about those issues, but the, um, the alleged violation was not an actual violation, uh, and it was something that, uh, his office did not deal with. So, um, although there may have been reported, uh, violation of the open door law for Michigan City Housing Authority, Public Access Counselor, he took a report, but there is no formal, uh, there's no formal action necessary.
And with, with that being said, I just want to add to this real quick, is, um, I don't know if you guys know about it, but, um, they replayed our story on We FM, five days, five days, um, five times every day, saying that we illegally fired or, or removed our, uh, last executive director. It was pretty nasty, uh, it definitely named Mr. Jewel Harris Jr. and Rodney McCormick Sr. as the people who illegally violated state law. With that being said, I want this board, I want us to seek, uh, I will call for an executive session, section, session, but right now, I want to, um, I want to just take a vote on having our attorney, uh, pull whatever it takes to get the radio, the, what was played on the radio from We FM, and get in his possession, and then call for executive session to seek legal action against the individuals for, for defamation.
What's it done, an advertisement or as a, like a news story?
It was a story that, the, the sad part about the story, uh, there was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rags, this is just from what I've seen, uh, a ruling came down on October 31st. Uh, We FM started playing this, I believe, on the, the second or third of November. They had firsthand knowledge that there was no violation, and they played it anyway. And then it replayed the vote, it replayed Mr. Vincent, myself, and it just kept going on and on and on, and the radio person has, they, I feel, I feel that they have a re- obligation to verify stories before they start reporting them, and they just kept going. So the, the ruling was already out on October the 31st, and they still played it. So that was very troubling to me. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to move forward with our attorney, um, getting the story in, and we'll call for executive session later on.
Before the motion, I'd like to ask the, the attorney, what, what recourse do we have? What do we, if we, if we move in this direction, what are we looking to gain? Are we looking just to have the story corrected on the radio, or what is there for us?
Well, there can be more, there can be multiple things, and I'm going to give you the traditional attorney answer, because I'm not familiar with We FM, uh, I can tell you from a journalistic standpoint, um, entities of media have a certain amount of protection for defamation, under a very famous, uh, Supreme Court case, uh, New York Times v. Sullivan, that's, that's the one that everyone knows, where as long as a news agency doesn't publish something that it knows to be false, uh, then there's a, an actual malice standard that has to be reached and things of that nature. Uh, if a news agency publishes a story that it knows is false, uh, then there can be actions that are taken against that news agency and that particular journalist who, uh, put that forth. Now, the remedy for that could look very different ways, based on what actual harm may have come to the authority, it could be something as minor as them printing a retraction, it could be something as major as monetary damages. It all, it's all based on the type of story that was written, the breadth, it, it, it varies. Um, even if the board didn't want our office to get involved, uh, the agency could definitely, um, you know, with some of our guidance, not necessarily, we do it, uh, contact that news agency, and again, this is me, uh, assuming that We FM is a, is a reputable, uh, news agency, and not, you know, something that's been run out of someone's home, or a podcast, or something like that, just because I'm not familiar. Um, but to answer your question, what are the, what, uh, remedies can you seek? It's a range based on the amount of damage, um, and what standard would have to be reached, you would just simply have to prove that they knew that the story was false, or there was reasons for them to have known the story was false.
It's just me, Mr. Vincent, I think that, um, we need to get a copy of the story, which they should have, and, uh, we just, our attorney get the copy, and then they can brief us out of executive session about pending litigation, what, what would be their recommendation?
I'd be favored getting more information, just to see what's going on, because they shouldn't be reporting things that aren't true, it's just bad for our reputation and how it would work.
So I would, I would entertain a motion if we can get a second, first, or get a motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, get the information from We FM, and schedule this an executive session to discuss it.
I'm second.
On the roll call, please.
And Ms. Benson?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Honig?
Honig?
Sorry. I'm sorry, I can't tell you to say it. Well, we hand or a long, I, I am sorry, I, it would be a lot better for me if you would so desire, if somebody just showed their hands, and we could do it that way?
Unfortunately, but we have to do it.
Okay, is there somebody here, one of our staff that can call them out?
I, I can, I can.
Please, I, I appreciate, I don't want to butcher people's names.
It's, it's not.
And that's not my expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Rags.
Thank you.
On the roll call, uh, Commissioner Raina?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody here.
Just had two questions for a vote. In this executive session, are we going to examine what damages we incurred?
Well, that will be a.
The executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. And as well, we would evaluate if they had any prior knowledge?
Yeah, all that would be evaluated in the executive session, that's not, uh.
Okay.
That's not something that we'd be evaluating prior to giving them.
And that would require a second vote?
Yes.
Okay, um, that would vote aye.
Uh, Commissioner Vincent?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Looney?
Looney.
And, and Sheriff Porter?
Aye.
With six ayes and zero nays, it's always passed. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my attorney's report.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, um, your executive director report?
It'll be included under the new business.
Okay, we own your new business.
Uh, employee health insurance, uh, we receive a renewal, uh, we currently have three people on our health, uh, insurance, uh, it is scheduled to go up, uh, 14.2%. Uh, we have total of nine full-time employees, but only three on our program, uh, it would be an annual cost of, uh, $47,020.92. Uh, last year, uh, the premium went up 24.6%, and this is the same carrier, uh, that we've, uh, had previously.
Boy, Mr. Vincent?
I have a question when it comes to health insurance. I'm, I'm currently on Marketplace. Is there a number of employees that we have that tells us we have to provide insurance for our employees, or can we just give a stipend to our people to go out on Marketplace and provide their own insurance?
If that's a question, well, there is no law that requires, uh, an employer to provide, uh, medical insurance, even a governmental employer.
So do we need to, we have nine employees, three of them are taking advantage of the program, the program costs forty something, forty-five thousand plus?
And the housing authority pays 75% of that, for, uh, for what I'm told, a single employee.
What is the deadline to, um?
Uh, this goes into effect, I believe it is, uh, January 1st.
Well, I, I would like to get a feel for what it, what are the other commissioners' thoughts on this? Is anyone else familiar with Marketplace, or, or, it's, it's the Affordable Healthcare Act, Obamacare, that's what it is, and you probably see it on TV, because right now it's open enrollment, I just did my open enrollment, and, uh, not to, I'll share, I, I've got, uh, my insurance for myself and my wife is $91 a month. So I, I don't see any reason why we're throwing $12,000 for each employee at a health insurance that may or may not fit their needs, when we could get something better by just helping the employee afford that. My daughter pays zero, I mean, it just, it, it just matters what plan you want.
I'm presenting this to you because the agent of record that you have as your insurance person, uh, gave me this information, and I, I think he may be out of town right now, but, uh, he gave me this information, so, uh, would do what you want me to do.
Commissioner Raina, you're in the, the, is, does your office handle healthcare, or is that auto life?
No, we do healthcare as well, but we, it's more like the, um, Medicare, Medicare supplements and things like that, not becomes a group insurance.
I think, I think I'm all for a stipend, um, I don't see the need for this, um, paying that much money out, and we have just three, yes, per, per individual?
Three individuals.
$12,000 per individual?
No, it's, uh, uh, it, it's different prices, the cost, it's age, band, and, and all that sort of thing. If we had, uh, all 18-year-old males, the, the, there would be virtually no cost, but, you know, you have people that have more experience, and that, you know, it's, it's age-banded. It would be nice to have more information options, I mean, because right now we got one, one offer essentially, and we don't have any competition for that, whether it's a stipend through Marketplace or another insurance agency, even that could, uh, do a better job of making sure our employees are taken care of, while also saving us money, because we have to be responsible for that as well. I would be happy to bring somebody else in, if that's what you want to do, and I would need some suggestion from you folks.
Also, for your benefit.
I'm thinking maybe we need a, either a, a workshop or a special meeting called for this, and maybe a good idea would be for Mr. Lane to, uh, talk to the employees to find out why the six aren't taking advantage of, of this, and maybe they are on Marketplace, maybe that's why the six.
Maybe they're on Marketplace, maybe they have a spouse situation.
Yep.
Uh, maybe we're not paying enough for them to be able to afford it, uh, and, you know, there's all kinds of different scenarios that, that might be, and it's individual.
I'd just hate to, to make a motion to drop something if it's going to hurt an individual without knowing what their status is, it doesn't seem fair.
I move that we table this till, until we have a special meeting, and look up the Affordable Care Act, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And bring information about Affordable Care Act, and see if that'll fit our, all of our employees, and then look into a stipend. We do have to be fiscally responsible, so. No, I'm not, I'm sorry. Any other discussion from any one of us?
Okay, uh, finance and budget.
We actually don't need to, to just have a meeting, the chairman has the ability to do that, so much of a problem, also.
Okay, we move that for a meeting, special meeting.
Uh, finance and budget, I have given you, uh, uh, information, uh, in there, on, in your packet, on, uh, that sort of thing, in fact, it's, uh, I believe, at this point, it's the audit of last year, uh, also, well, I am collecting, uh, names for an audit, uh, information for the audit to come up for this year, for, or for 2023, uh, so I'm collecting that particular information, and, uh, we have a very capable, uh, former auditor and, uh, finance person sitting in the back office, uh, crunching numbers, Patty Morgan, who is with us until Friday, uh, helping us on some things, and, uh, And, uh, since our finance, uh, manager is not here, uh, right now, uh, we have Brittany who is, uh, working with, uh, Patty Morgan to try to, uh, figure out, uh, our budget and all of that sort of thing and see what is in what accounts and, and all that sort of thing. And I hope that you appreciate, uh, the openness that we have, uh, provided you by, uh, giving you information on all the accounts and all that sort of thing so that you can kind of see what's, uh, going on and all that sort of thing. Any questions about, uh, finance or budget that you have with me that? And I'm trying to be very conservative on spending money, uh, you know, because of that situation of, uh, our budget and kind of being in a matter of flux right now.
We have an operational subsidy, um, that's due with, with HUD coming up pretty quick here.
Yeah, the twentieth, and she's trying to get the information that you can get, uh, as of this particular minute. I don't believe unless I've got an email that I don't know about, I didn't have as of two o'clock today. Uh, I do not have an access to the HUD secure system as of two o'clock today.
And you do go online and fill out the, uh?
Yes, sir, and that's fifty-one days that I haven't, I'm sorry, twenty-eight working days I haven't had a, uh, access.
And that includes, uh, well, I've been for two years, so.
Where's that held up at?
Um, the, you, uh, make the application and then, uh, your field office is involved in it too, in an act.
In your experience, has it, is this a typical time period for something like?
I've never, ever experienced this like this before.
Yep.
So I don't know what, uh, I don't know all the things that are going on. I don't know, uh, where all the problems lie.
Who's responsible for that field? Is that under a federal umbrella, is that under the state government too?
Federal.
So federal hires those people, so it's like federal oversight to make sure that they do their job, which they're not doing, okay.
So you've gone as far as you can go?
And I've gone as far as I can go. And I can't do, I cannot do things that I have, uh, told you I can do as far as our, my agreement with you, uh, without access to things. So I am trying to do the best I can with this agency and our staff, uh, to run the agency by, by the seat of my pants without, uh, having the opportunity. We have one drawdown, uh, we need another drawdown here pretty soon, uh, to draw down the money from the federal government to put in accounts. But I only have one person that can do that and that person's all sick. So, uh, one of the big problems is not having a backup system, uh, so that if one person leaves or whatever the situation might be, that somebody else could do that. Uh, right now, normally that would have been our, um, our finance manager. And with that person being out sick, then I'm in the, I'm in the, uh, system every day checking bank accounts twice a day and, uh, making sure that we have the money to cover, uh, expenses and, and all that sort of thing, so. But thank goodness I was able to get credentials to do that or it could be worse.
Would help from our attorney? Making a phone call, I, I don't know, the relationships of downstate, uh?
We would be willing to do whatever the board, uh, would request those. I'm not sure that it will expedite those, uh, with any, I suppose.
I will perfectly honest with you, um, our attorney has done everything in his power and their power to expedite this situation. I even filled out the paperwork because I have to get this AMP number as well. And eventually you're going to have to get one. I don't even want to make no speculation, we are, we are, we have right now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, read an email?
Yes.
I received it two thirty-eight PM. Uh, Bob, I got your message, link below, um, for your M number. I will give you a call after the board meeting. So this person knew I was coming to the board meeting, so I need to call them afterwards.
We just wait to hear from you.
Is that a positive email then?
I, I feel it is.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll see how it all plays out.
And if not, if not, uh, because time is of the essence. And does anyone have suggestions about getting, since it's a federal agency, to get our, our local congressman or our congressperson involved? I don't know if that's, uh?
Definitely a good idea.
What entity that, that would fall under if it, if it's a senator or, or congressperson. But I, I think if it's dragging out this long, something is wrong and we need help from someone.
There was a complaint filed. I, I just, I'll leave it at that. There was a complaint filed with our, with a, um, agency, a federal agency to get involved.
And what's, what become of that?
We are waiting on outcome. It was just recently filed, so they need some day, they need some days to get into it. I feel better talking about this in the executive session, the complaint, all that stuff.
Can you let us know if you get your M number today, if that's indeed what that's about?
We're trying to, I'll try to give you a thing tonight.
Okay.
And if they give him access, I will have an M number as well. That's how it works. So he's the coordinator and I'm a user and he'll be a user, so that's how it works. Um, time is running out on us with Mr. Mr. Lane. Um, I, I think it'd be in our best interest to pay back off another agency, help us with our finances at this time. I don't, I don't see hiring somebody at this time without having access to our, to the, uh, the system. But I think we need to have our attorney look into helping us find another outside agency to pay back off of. Not only through fi, about finance, also with, um, bringing in a ED until we can hire one. Because our time is running out and it's running out fast. And this is what we have to look at. This reality, this is reality. Mr. Lane agreed to come here for a certain amount of time and we need somebody that's going to be here to oversee this agency. And none of us are here qualified to do it and we can't do it. So we have to really talk about this right now.
Is that under D for new business?
If you want to put it in there, um, no, 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 that's not it. I just brought that up, this about the, uh, the finance side of this. We don't know what's going on, Mr. Lane.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the, uh, members of commission. Uh, I would be happy, uh, as, as was stated, I have a specific amount of time that I'm able to serve uh, on a weekly basis as your, uh, interim executive director, uh, which will end, uh, on or before, uh, December fifteenth. Uh, I would be happy after that point, um, to do, uh, work with this agency by Zoom, by email, by text, uh, by telephone call or, or whatever, uh, would be desired, uh, until such time, if, until you get a new director, if that's what you choose to do. Uh, it becomes difficult on my, uh, for me to drive two hundred and seventy-eight miles, uh, twice a week, uh, to come up here and, and serve your residents, uh, you and your, and the staff here. Um, so I just need a little bit of relief from that. That's not to say that I wouldn't come back up, uh, if you so desire. But I just, trying to do it on a weekly basis is just a little bit more than, uh, I think that I, I need to do at this particular point. So I'll throw that out there to you. If you would, um, desire, uh, to do that and you feel like I could do a good job with that and it would help, as I said, the, the residents of this, this board and the staff, uh, I would be willing to do that sort of thing.
Mr. Ray, I have a legal question for you. Um, would it be better to discuss bringing in, uh, paybacking off another agency, um, for the, for the obvious reasons, at executive session instead of at this opening?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that I'm, uh, understanding correctly. Uh, because usually payback is a procurement term. It means when you, when they are procuring somebody to do a service, so like a finance audit or something like that, then you can bring them in out, uh, separately procuring. Or do you mean another agency and their employees possibly?
To help it out, yes.
So another agency and their employees assisting? Those are conversations that are necessarily have to have them at a, a board meeting. If that's something that the board is interested in exploring, then I'm sure that Mr. Lane can start having the relevant conversations with local agencies to see, uh, what the options are and present those options back to the board. Because for instance, if there was an agency that the board said, wow, they're running a hundred percent and doing very well, but that agency wasn't willing to come over, you'd want to know that for.
Correct.
Going into what we want them to come over and, and help us manage or something like that. So those are, they're, they're conversations that we have, but if that's something that the board's interested in thinking about, uh, staff can, can get started on having those conversations with, with, uh, agencies.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Lane. I hope it would be a recommendation of all of us as board members. Yeah, Mr. Lane, go ahead and start looking out to, um, outside agencies, uh, come in and help us.
When you, when you say outside agencies, outside house authority agencies?
Yes, yes. I'm not too keen about Lake County myself, but it's the board pleasure what you bring back to us. How we feel as board, do we want to do this or? Mr. Vincent?
At this point, I feel like we don't have any other alternative. I mean, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, so we have to do something. And like you said, time is, is of the essence, we, we have to really get some things going.
Mr. Looney?
I feel like this should be handled in an executive session rather than go over a little more detail and give us some information that we're not airing all of our business out front of everybody. Just so we can handle it properly, which we get the right people to help us because we do need help, obviously.
That's right.
I agree with Benny, so.
Mr. Mooney?
Yeah, the, the summer fifteenth is going to be here in a few weeks. So I, I think we need to figure it out quick.
Boss, any questions?
Investigate, sure, I'd be in favor of that. Investigate, see what other pieces we're talking about, no decision.
Put this on the executive meeting?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. We, we are requesting that executive meeting, uh, and I will give you the date, uh, so we can get to it right away. Do we need to have a roll call?
No.
All right.
You need something from me. I, you know, I don't know the names of all these folks in this region and, uh, I don't know who to contact and, and all that sort of thing. I, I mean, I can look that up. And if I'm spending all my time on that, then I will not be spending my time on what I'm doing here all the time. So you, you, you know, you've got to kind of make the choice.
Office against this.
Okay, 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 that'd be great. Good?
Okay.
Good, fine. I'm, uh, proposing, uh, a cost of living, uh, increase for staff of three point two percent, which is, I think, the social security, uh, national average, uh, going back to October the first, uh, at the start of the fiscal year. Um, our staff is doing a tremendous job with, uh, having a, a lack of staff, having people off sick and, uh, trying to keep this, uh, the wheels on this bus. So I, I congratulate them on how, that they have worked with me to try to serve, uh, our residents.
With that being said, I want to thank all of you for stepping up when we had so many people down. We already knew this is going to be a team effort to get to where we are at right now and to move forward. It's going to take teamwork. Um, as the chair, I am totally uncomfortable with a cost of living increase at this time because there will be a new ED coming here soon. And I think that ED should be the one to make that decision. Um, my only question to you at this time, Mr. Lane, will be, have you done any evaluations? Have you done evaluations on, on the staff members?
It's hard to evaluate staff if you don't have a, a job description. Uh, I, I provide you with two job descriptions for your review. Uh, without job descriptions, uh, I have, I, I can't do a legal job of doing evaluations on people without, uh, a job description.
And I, I know that Mr. Mooney had, I mean, Mr. Looney, and I believe you did too, Mr. Vincent, that we, we wanted to know what the salaries were. When we was looking into our budget, that was concerning because we never knew what was going on with the salaries as well. So, um, I'm going to let everybody else speak. Um, my, my, I, I just would, I, I'd rather table this and let the new ED take care of this. But I will open the floor up to discussion. Mr. Vincent?
I'll just, uh, I'll just make comment that with the changes that's happening here, it's, I'm sure it's very stressful on the staff. Lot of different things have happened, a lot of changes have, have come in place. We brought in Mr. Lane and he has directed the staff. And from what I see and what I understand, the staff has been more than, uh, willing to learn new jobs, do new things, take on new responsibilities and in not only helping us here, but helping themselves too in their career field. So I don't, I don't see dedication like that going un, unrewarded. I'll make a motion to approve the living increase, vote the, uh, increase of three point two percent.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Is this, is it flag across the board or is it evaluation based? Uh, being with evaluation, I can't do evaluations because I don't have a job description. I can't, I can't legally do it on.
So we're just going to do a flag across the board?
Flag across the board is my motion.
All right. And, and in addition to that, guys, we don't know how long the search is going to last. So for the new ED to come in, I mean, it could be a year, so we don't.
Please. Any other, any other discussion? We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion before we have roll call? On the roll call, Mr.?
Commissioner Rayna?
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vincent?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
I'm going to say aye, but I, I'm kind of in the position of I too would like to see a job description. I would like to see the, the current base pay, uh, rate for where each employee is at right now. Um, but, um, and I know it's tar, it's hard, I know inflation is going up, I know cost of living, um, is hard also. So I'm, I'm kind of on the fence. Not that I don't feel anyone should get a raise, but there's some things that are missing in order for us to be fiscally responsible. But I'll say aye.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, I'll say aye because three percent seems, you know, like kind of the bare minimum when you give people that have been working so hard for us. And chairman, for me?
Nay, and I would like to have a job description, uh, as soon as possible for all, all employees.
With, uh, five ayes and one nay, the vote carries, the motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, and members of the board, uh, what I have included is two job descriptions. Uh, I do this kind of thing, I, I do foretrain and then, uh, uh, job descriptions for folks. I had, only had time to do two, uh, so one of them is for public housing manager and also for executive director. Uh, hope you've had time to maybe look through those and see, uh, what is included in those. And I, uh, if, if I'm the one you want to do the job descriptions, then, um, I would do that for the, the rest of the staff too. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on job descriptions and how, uh, they come about and, and all that sort of thing and the requirements therein.
I have not had time to look at the job descriptions, uh, just receive them. So our person will move to table this to the next meeting to give us time to look over the job descriptions. Try to find something else to compare it with as well. I still would entertain a motion for discussion.
Yeah, I have discussion. Do we need a job description to put out advertisement for executive director to hire?
Well, I would say yes.
I would think so.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd have to.
Did I make a motion, we accept the job description as written for executive director and property manager?
Second. Any other discussion?
On the roll call, Mr. Rags?
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vincent?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Looney?
Aye.
Chairman? I'm McCormick.
Nay.
With five ayes and one nay, the motion carries.
Uh, status of the, the executive director search, Brittany Han, do you have anything that has come in about that yet?
Um, I have emails with the links of where those job postings are.
No, I mean, have you got anything that's, that's addressed to, um, Mr. McCormick with a, uh, somebody that has applied for the job?
No, sir.
Okay. And we have these at three sources, NARO, NCRC, and FODA. They have, they have the job descriptions. So at this particular point, we do not have a, uh, an applicant. Uh, and, and part of that is it, it takes time for the word to get out and then also at this time of the year is difficult. Uh, it's easier in the spring of the year versus, uh, uh, in November and December and those months, in my opinion.
Any discussion? You want to ask Mr. Lane?
What's that? Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Uh, here are some things that I, uh, we would propose is a proposal of public housing repayment agreements. Uh, our housing authority since 2020, 2020, has, uh, delinquent rent, rent on length What I ask our public housing manager to do is to not give us an address, not give us a name so that we could fairly look at this. And we have people that owe money since 2020 in an amount of $15,361 to $2 on the list and you have that. And the public housing manager is the only one that has this code. I do not have the code, don't know where it is, who it is, because I feel like that's the most fair way to do it. And secondly, what I would suggest is that we send a certified letter to folks that are not paying their rent. Uh, they either do a repayment agreement with this agency, uh, and the final sign-off would be the, uh, interim executive director. Uh, and if they don't come in, they don't do a repayment agreement, then they, we move for eviction.
Is that, is, will they have one chance to come in and if they fail to come in, no, no show, we, they out of there? You want to start the process? What's the number?
You as, uh, you are policymakers as commissioners, uh, I would entertain what the, you feel like that you would like to have in that.
What is your recommendation?
Uh, I would say as far as coming in, uh, unless they're, have a medical issue, uh, that they need to come in and, and see us and make an appointment, uh, so that we can get that moved.
And what I'm saying is if they fail to show up to the appointment date, will we move forward from that?
I would say if, I mean, it would be fair to give them one, maybe two, but that's it.
I'm only going for one. Um, I, I'm only, I'm only in agreement for one. I will entertain a motion to accept this with just, um, give them, if they don't show, we give them one excuse and that's it on this repayment agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion from anyone?
So would you allow them, they're the ones that are going to set the time. So that means they should know what their schedule is, they can make the appointment. We're not just sending a window B here at this time and...
No, 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 no. We're going to say when is the good time for you to come here and meet with us so that we can get this going.
Right.
And you, I hope you understand why that I put this so, it's anonymous, that isn't for any of you or me and it's, you know, it is the most fair way I know of doing things. And it captures everybody and there's a lot of money, uh, there that this, and people need to pay and it's not fair to those who pay their rent, no matter what the level is, to pay their money and then not, uh, you have others that don't.
Right.
And they will receive a certified letter?
They will receive a certified letter.
Any other discussion? On the roll call, please.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vincent?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Looney?
Aye.
Chairman McCormick?
Aye.
With six ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you.
This is where I ask for, um, MCHDI and all our non-for-profit properties to be added to, um, to the list. I, I, I believe the time has come for us to, um, totally separate from this agency. Um, I'd like to have all our non-for-profit properties, um, if there, any properties that was not purchased with capital funds, funds, I mean, capital funds, uh, all of them be moved to HDI effective immediately. No more of our properties to be sold. Um, we will not do anything without the boards, without, um, without HDI approval once we ex, if we, if we grant this motion. Um, Mr. Rags, I, um, I hope that I'm trying to say this right.
I, I think I know where we're going, Commissioner, if I, if I could just sweep it slightly.
Yes.
Um, as members of the board and other members may know, uh, MCHA has three board members that participate in a non-for-profit, uh, MCHDI, uh, as a member of the housing authority. Uh, there are certain properties that are owned by MCHDI. Um, there are some properties that are, that there are questions on, you know, where the ownership law is. Uh, is it MCHDI, is it MCHA? Because they are two distinct entities, although there are some overlap. They are two distinct entities. Uh, and I believe that there, that, uh, hearing from the board, there is an interest in trying to, uh, clean the lines and, and, and not let the lines be blurred as much as they have been. There have been some questions on whether or not public housing funds have been used for, uh, for the affiliate properties or whether or not there are some affiliate monies being used for housing authority tenants and whether or not tenants are in the right places and things like that. I believe what the chairman is, is trying to say is you want to, um, you want to ensure that all properties that are owned by Michigan City Housing Authority are in Michigan City Housing Authority's name, but any property that is, that have not purchased with, uh, capital fund dollars or does not have program income associated with it, uh, it should be transferred out from MCHA. Prior to making that, that motion though, I think it, it may be in the agency's best interest to get a listing of the properties that may be affected, um, and discuss those properties at an executive session as you can do with, uh, acquisition and disposition of real estate so that there can just be a more informed decision. I understand where you're trying to go.
Yeah, this is urgent. I, I, these properties, I think what we need to do in this agency is focus on public housing in section eight. We don't need to be doing nothing else. Um, our non-for-profit is not, um, things are just not right. And I don't want to go into details, we can talk about that in executive session. Um, I feel that we can still make a motion and if the properties are, they belong to here, they stay here, right? If they don't, if it went bought with capital funds, we moving on. So...
We just want to make sure that they're not subject to an acquisition right hold.
Cool, okay.
You know, not have spent capital funds on them yet, but if an acquisition toll was turned, just some, some, some interior housekeeping.
How soon can you help us get that done? Because Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane is tied.
I, 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 I know that it's, it's going to be a nexus here. Um, we would, we would have to get a listing of all MCHA properties, uh, or...
And some private properties, correct?
Well, the non-profit we, we have, I believe we have. It, it would be, it would be best if Mr. Lane and I can have a couple of discussions that before committing to a timeline, because it's really going to take a nexus between our...
Can we have an executive session, um, within 10 days?
I would see, I would keep that in mind.
Okay, I'll wait here from you and then I, I'll schedule and make sure everybody receives it. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Vincent?
No, I just wanted to bring up the, the discussion that we had about shared time with one of the employees of Michigan City Housing Authority with helping out the affiliate. And, and that was just a blanket conversation that passed the, the Michigan City Housing Development, Inc. board. I just wanted to make sure that this board knew about that as well, that we were discussing that, so...
Yeah, good. We, we've got a situation now where, um, we've got an individual that's qualified that could, um, do more than one job, could be a, um, a part-time person with our housing choice voucher program to boost that up and give us some more help there. And also, um, be prorated so that, uh, they would be over those not-for-profit properties and actually manage those. Uh, so I, I would, I would make a, a suggestion, uh, and I would be happy to do that job description that would include that and show how that would, uh, work. However, um, I've got to do a little bit more research and work, get a little bit more to know the exact time because it's not a 50-50 deal, uh, and I don't think that the not-for-profits should have to pay, uh, even, uh, any more than their fair share. And, and nor should section eight. So we've got, we need to justify why the breakdown would be what it would be. I don't think it would be 50-50, it might be, uh, 35-65. I'm not, I'm not exactly for sure, but that needs to be because it's, um, that's, that's something we could work on and it looks like to me with staff we have, that's something that we can do. And keep it separate. Because I, I, I'm here, you know, the thing about keeping it separate, I understand that and, um, it's, it's, it's going to be good that, uh, at some particular point, you're going to know on all of these properties, uh, uh, who it belongs to, who controls it and all that sort of thing. And we've already worked on, uh, getting the, uh, we, we know how much, uh, or we're working on how much money comes into the not-for-profit from, uh, these properties and all that sort of thing. So we're working on that sort of thing to get that for you.
I got a question. When we go look at these properties, um, doing a background title search or whatever it is on these properties, how long will it take for you to just determine if these properties were purchased with capital funds? That, it had to be some kind of agreement, right? Should have had, should have been.
Under normal circumstances, it, it's not that difficult. You can, you can generally trace the acquisition of a property back to when it was added to an app, when it was put in pick, you know, when, when the DOT was recorded, all, all those types of things. You can usually trace those back to figure out, you know, how, you know, the acquisition proposal and, and under normal circumstances, it's not that difficult. I have not been able to get into, um, the offices to see the historical record keeping. So I, I, it's difficult for me to say.
I understand, I understand. So, and there's one last housekeeping issue of the audit. We wanted to get, um, uh, I believe it was our, our, we want to get audit done as soon as possible. We're tired, we, we've been trying to get this done. Mr. Lane said he's going to pick three names. Uh, we also want to get our other affiliated, uh, audit as well. Is it possible for, um, MCHDI to move forward and, and take the initiative of getting an audit person in here so we don't have to go through the, um, the process of, uh, procurement and then that for audit or, and, and then the housing authority pay their fair share back to?
No.
The KDO?
No, no.
Okay.
That would be a sidestep in the procurement. Um, is it po- is it possible to do it the opposite way? Uh, have MCHA procure the auditor and then have MCHDI, uh, pay their fair share? Uh, yes. Going the other way or just having MCHDI pick someone that's part of MCA and then have them go to MCHI?
Mr. Lane, we look, uh, we recommend that you hurry up and, um...
Okay.
Get that, get that started as soon as possible. If there is any other discussion from anyone, I would entertain a motion to, uh...
We go ahead. Next meeting, number nine.
I never did that one before, but if we had to have a vote...
Is, is that not the regularly scheduled meeting? Because if it's not the regularly scheduled meeting and it's a meeting change, then...
It's a meeting change.
Okay. If you're, yeah, if you're changing a regularly scheduled meeting, uh, a vote would be, wouldn't be necessary that you...
Is everybody, um, okay with the December 14th? Um, you know, we usually meet on a third Thursday, so...
Yes.
Is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you want to tell them the reason?
Not really. You can tell them.
The, the reason is I, I leave on the 50th. So I want to be able to not leave you hanging. I want to try to finish up some things before I...
Got you.
And again, I, I'll, I'll make this one more time if, if I can help you, uh, remotely and, uh, I, I would be more than happy to do that.
We will have a special meeting before that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you do.
Okay. So we, um, we need your roll call on that.
Does that need for everyone?
Yes, yes.
Because chairman has it for his seven meeting schedule.
Yes.
Just want to make sure it works for everybody.
No, no need for...
An actual roll call?
No. Motion to adjourn or I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you.